Need some fish or a bath.
I can do it with my shirt.
Yeah.
Welcome to the March 22nd, 2021 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. Prior to tonight's meeting, we will have an invocation offered by myself, followed by the pledge of allegiance offered by myself and my fellow commissioners. God, please be with us and with our government officials and their staff as they deal with the challenges of today. Give them wisdom on how to best represent everyone. Father, we also ask that you give our leaders courage so that even when it is hard, they will continue to boldly represent their constituents' needs and those of the most vulnerable among us. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Ms. Briggs, do you call the roll?
Yes, President Brady. Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Minzer?
Here.
Mr. Winding?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of March 8th, 2021. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Fisher Watkins.
I'm with you. We accept the minutes of the March 8th meeting and dispense with a formal reading.
There been a motion and there's been a second discussion. It's not objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Once again, we're holding this meeting, Sandusky City Commission meeting electronically and in person. Commissioners, staff are in attendance through an Internet hookup in a variety of safe locations, as well as onsite. We've asked our audience to either submit their questions or their comments and writings to our commission clerk. We will answer those that pertain to legislation as that legislation comes before us, as well as provide a response to any other audience questions from the appropriate staff. But also, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that those participating in this meeting are doing some of the appropriate distancing and, when necessary, face masks. Ms. Briggs, are there any questions from the public that pertain to tonight's meeting?
Yes, President Brady. We have several questions from Ms. Sharon Johnson of 1139 Fifth Street in Sandusky. She writes in in regards to item three, how does the city bid out a job when the listing of streets are missing? For item four, Ekadec and the Port Authority share the same director. The director has stepped down from the Economic Development Committee, only serving in an advisory capacity. I have concerns about a conflict of interest with the director advising the ED Committee, which could take on the appearance of lobbying for city grants for developments the director has brokered through the Port Authority and Ekadec. How can the city ease my concerns? And for item five, Mr. Hody will have exclusive rights to sell the Cold Creek properties? Were other realtors given the same opportunity, or was Mr. Hody handpicked by the city?
Those questions will be addressed as we get to the appropriate legislations those questions pertain to. As we have for the past 10 years, around this time of year, we're provided with a review of the previous year by our friends and partners at Ekadec. That time for that review is this evening, and we look forward to our presentation. Do we have Ekadec with us, Ms. Briggs?
Yep, they're on the line, and Abby is taking over.
Great.
Great.
Abby, welcome. The floor is yours.
Welcome. Thank you so much for having us. Different meeting format, missing our annual friends in person. Yes, my name's Abby Bemis. I'm the Executive Director of the Erie County Economic Development Corporation. We appreciate the time this evening, and as always, the partnership with the City of Sandusky. You are familiar with our organization. We are interested in driving growth in the Erie County community. We believe that business investment creates opportunities for our residents, creates stronger, more stable families in our community, and that is the focus of our nonprofit organization. We are fortunate to be a public-private partnership, meaning we benefit from the contribution of the City of Sandusky, but also from private companies, foundations from across the community. Seventy-seven organizations contributed to our organization last year. And by way of context, we'd like to play this short video for you as an introduction or recap to our organization, and thank you to our investors. At Ekadec, our work supports entrepreneurs, like the ones you find in your downtown coffee shops or retail. It supports big and large industries, the farm, the manufacturer, and it also supports our community as a whole. We work on things like workforce development, community development in partnership with so many different people.
But at the end of the day, what we're trying to do at Ekadec is grow Erie County. Ekadec's greatest strength is being a private nonprofit organization. It allows us to really work on the same level as our businesses with the support of our public partners.
We're really fortunate to have stakeholders who are, as future-focused as we are, and what that means is they give us the patience and the support to tackle complicated issues and to be responsive while still being mission-driven as an organization.
If they hadn't been a part of this for me, I don't know if I would have been able to launch this business the way that I did, or even stay in this business the way that I did. And they are the thread that weaves throughout all of those conversations. They can do research that's beyond what I even knew was possible, just to help me make some decisions about growing my business.
Economic development's important, good times and bad. And for us, it's always good to be investing because it transcends from the future. Every time we do something, we need a little bit of help on something different, and they're always there to help us out, no matter what the issue is. What I notice with Ekadec is when we say, here's the problem, it's not a no, it's always a, we'll figure it out. And I think that's key, is that you have a willing partner.
To see how they continue to grow and evolve and meet the needs of businesses in our community has been very exciting to see over the years, whether it's been helping new businesses get started, or whether it's helping with workforce development. Ekadec plays a role that's desperately needed in our community. And as I got to learn more and more about Ekadec, about Abby and that team, and the role that they could play with the other entities in Erie County to just help align us on vision and purpose, I knew Ekadec was the right place for me to participate.
We just want to say thank you again to our investors at the organization, really your partners in this community's success and in our organization. And we're really proud of what we've been able to do with your partnership. So thank you to our partners in education and in local government, and of course, private industry, and our investors. So that video echoed our thanks and an introduction to the role that we play in the community. I also want to say a special thank you to our Board of Directors, including City Manager Eric Whipster and formerly Chief Development Officer Matt Lasko, for guiding our organization, the successes that we've had over the last year. So we have four focus, I'm sorry, three focus areas of our organization, and through the service-level agreement with the City of Sandusky, we'll hit on some quick highlights under each, and a comment or two on what to expect for 2021 from Ekadec. First up, business attraction, retention, and expansion. As I said in our introduction, we are of the mindset that business growth creates opportunities for our residents in a stronger community, and we do a lot of connecting dots between company resources and the opportunities and challenges that they see doing business in the Erie County area. So promotion, site selection, resource navigation for a number of projects in 2020. We've been likening the last year, obviously a unique one for our economy, and for certain companies, the best year they've ever had, and for half of companies, unfortunately, the worst year they've ever had. But both demanded a high degree of touch and customer service to make sure that they were able to navigate new terrain for themselves. I wanted to highlight a couple of projects here that you will have seen in our publications and success stories. A grant delivered to the growing Sandusky Packaging Corporation. Site acquisition from a key facility in the City of Huron, the former IAC facility, now acquired by RDO Group. Redevelopment vision for a key industrial site in the City of Sandusky to 509 Hayes. These are the kinds of projects, resource navigation, that we do on a day-to-day basis. Also had steady activity in regards to site searches and business support, although the business support, which our program director, Sarah Ross, is going to get into more detail, it definitely looked different in 2021, and as you might imagine, was focused on pandemic-related challenges. One thing I did just want to note last on this topic, in 2021, Ekadec is assuming management of the Erie County Port Authority, which you all are familiar with, delivered value to the resort and attraction management school project in downtown. So large construction opportunities are places where the Erie County Port Authority can provide value, and we're looking forward to working with the city development team on many opportunities in the City of Sandusky.
Thanks, Abby. As Abby said, I'm Sarah, the Program Director at Ekadec. And as you saw from some of the other projects that Abby mentioned, Ekadec's role typically involves connecting businesses with resources and assistance that's available to them. So it's a lot of coordinating with agencies and providers. And in a normal year, that keeps us busy. In a COVID year, when new programs and new regulations are being developed by the minute, that keeps us incredibly busy. So 2020, really, we liken it to, we went through three phases in our office. First, focusing on mobilization in response to the onset of COVID, followed by reopening, and then a focus on longer-run recovery. So in every stage, we were interacting with our businesses, whether it was through direct email business briefings, direct referrals to programs. We hosted a weekly webinar series throughout 2020, just to help businesses navigate the system. And then we were also able to develop some programming in-house, in conjunction with local partners, which we're really proud of those extra dollars that we've been able to leverage on behalf of all of our communities, whether those were federal dollars or private foundation dollars in response to the pandemic. So a few specific examples of those programs include two relief grants. You'll see the dollar there that went directly to City of Sandusky small businesses. And we're really proud of these programs in that we were very intentional about being future-focused. And the businesses that applied and received the funds really were businesses that were thinking toward the future, obviously trying to get through COVID, but also thinking ahead to how can they be here in Erie County and Sandusky long-term. And then learning from each round of programming that we did, one thing that became very clear to us is, bar restaurants were just in a completely different atmosphere, and we had to come up with some programs specifically related to them. So we're very thankful for partners at the Erie County Community Foundation for developing a meals program, in which we can do bulk meal procurement from local restaurants to feed families in need in this community. So many of these programs are still ongoing, but again, still looking ahead to longer-term recovery and how we can here, take what we learned through these programs and what the businesses need, and turn that into long-term successes. So as is true with any recession, a renewed focus on entrepreneurship. And many of you are familiar with our entrepreneur support program called RISE. RISE was extremely busy last year, with 95 advising appointments. And this is beyond just the COVID navigation. This is helping entrepreneurs learn how to start and grow their business. And one of our key focus areas that we spoke to this commission about last year was how can RISE better serve minority entrepreneurs? And we're very thankful for the partnership of this city and many other leaders throughout the city, including the schools and several business owners, who helped us over the last eight months or so form this grassroots organization, the Minority Business Empowerment Team. And this is a new venture for the community overall, as well as RISE, and we really support the work of this group. This group has four goals. We're really aiming to elevate and promote, support, and advocate for local entrepreneurs, minority entrepreneurs, build a pipeline of minority entrepreneurs, provide technical assistance to minority entrepreneurs, and then engage in community listening to be sure that those are the appropriate goals and add where needed. So new in 2021, you'll see further effort in this area, as well as continuation of our ongoing minority business recovery grant. I'll turn it back to Abby as we transition into talking about the other focus areas of Ekadec.
Yes, so a second focus area of Ekadec, and probably an increasing one in longer-term recovery from the pandemic, is workforce attraction and development. So when driving business investments, one of the number-one questions is, do I have the availability and quality of talent that I need for my company? We saw mass exodus from our labor force throughout the pandemic year. I'm just coming off a webinar that says we lost 2,000 people in the labor force this month as compared to last year, so that's not reflecting unemployment, that's participation. So these are the kinds of systemic challenges that we, as a region, need to tackle in 2021. Our accomplishments for 2022 are directly connected and will be a resource in doing so. Namely, we entered the second stage of the Firelands Forward Workforce Development Initiative. You all might remember us discussing this or participated with us in 2019, where we partnered with Huron County to get our arms around what are workforce challenges in the Firelands region, and what, from a strategic planning perspective, can we do to differentiate our area as the right place for investment with a stable labor force? We have recently brought on two staff members dedicated to regional workforce development under the Firelands Forward umbrella, sort of the second stage for the movement. They will be very focused in 2021 on working directly with companies to make sure that they are fully accessing resources to support their labor force needs. They'll also be connected with ongoing work that our office does through the Erie County Business Advisory Council, which is interested in retaining young people in our labor force, getting them directly connected with careers. We noted some accomplishments from 2021 here under that program umbrella. Like all of our school systems, we had to adapt this program to a virtual setting, and the team put together some really interesting virtual career exploration resources that were heavily utilized by the Erie County communities and the City of Sandusky. So as I said, this will continue to be a focus for us in 2021. And then the third focus area in our service-level agreement is captured under Regional Economic Development and Brand Awareness. You all have heard me say before that every day, about half of our community's residents leave for work, and about half of our labor force in Erie County comes in from outside the county. And so those numbers and the transient nature of a labor force really only increase as you decrease the municipality level. So it's really important to be coordinating with our neighbors, and that's the kind of spirit that you see captured in these bullet points and in our service-level agreement with the City of Sandusky. How are we sure we're partnering with neighboring counties, with the state, with federal opportunities to be sure our communities are best assisted? We're currently working with the City of Sandusky on a couple of new programs from the state of Ohio, as a focused example. Other things we do under this umbrella, we want to promote our region and the City of Sandusky as a strong pro-growth location. So we really work to foster a strong regional identity in a literal marketing sense. And so you see some of our marketing accomplishments from 2020 captured here. Our ever-popular Days of Development series highlights case studies from our region, noted a few stories from the City of Sandusky, always providing us good content for those. That's really well-received by Erie Canyons and the state at large. And then finally, just working with resource providers and partners in our community to be sure we have a cohesive agenda when it comes to economic development. So noted a few committees and participation directly with the City of Sandusky here. All in all, it's been a really good year for our organization, a difficult year for the economy, and we appreciate all the work that we do on a day-to-day basis with your team. They're great to work with, and we appreciate the ongoing engagement and support. With that, I'm happy to answer questions now or later in the agenda, but that's what we have prepared.
Questions or comments for Ms. Bemis, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Fisher Twine.
First, I want to thank Abby and Sarah for the presentation tonight. I am in particular excited about the Minority Business Recovery Act grant funding that is becoming available this year, as well as the high school career connections, frontline worker retention, proactive business assistance. It looks like that they have an understanding of the needs, the changing needs of the community and people that live in our community. So again, I just want to express my appreciation to their attention toward those things, because I think those are the things that will help Sandusky get to where we need to be as far as reaching young people, as well as minorities.
Additional questions or comments, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Fisher Watkins.
I've been on commission 14 years, and again, I'd like to say thank you. I agree with my fellow commissioner on her comments, and that each and every year, I wish we could even give more than the $30,000. Thank you.
Additional comments, questions? Ms. Bemis, the one statistic that consistently hits me between the eyes is the one on job retention and business retention, and how critical a component is of your organization, how critical that component is of your organization, as we all in business know, or in any economic endeavor, it is so much easier to retain a business than to replace one. I'm not sure your batting average can accurately assess how well you've done in that realm, but in many cases, you are, your organization is probably the only people that are out there doing that and calling on people. So I, again, echo my fellow commissioners' comments. I appreciate your efforts in this regard, and especially the efforts on retaining businesses and not allowing them, not giving them a reason to slip away or fade away. So thanks for that. And thank you for the presentation. I know we have legislation here tonight, and if you'll still be available for questions on that, I'd appreciate it.
Will be. Thank you so much.
We have a public hearing tonight on CDGB Fiscal Year 2021 Planning Process. That hearing is going to be presented by our staff person, Debbie Eversole, and that will be followed by questions or comments from the public and from commission. I think Ms. Eversole probably has questions from the public with her, so I'll allow her to handle those during her presentation, and then she can handle the questions from commission after that, if that works for you, Debbie, it'd be good.
That's perfect.
Great. The floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner President Brady and members of the commission. This will be the first of two public hearings concerning the City of Sandusky's 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program year. As an entitlement city, Sandusky directly receives an allocation of funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development to carry out selected activities within the community. Eligible activities include, but are not limited to, acquisition, demolition, public facility projects, infrastructure improvement, public service activities, and planning activities. Under this grant, there are certain requirements which cannot be exceeded, in general, including a maximum of 20% of allocation to be expended on administration expenses, and a maximum of 15% of the allocation to be expended on public services during the program year. A minimum of 70% of the funds must be a benefit to low- to moderate-income persons or households. All of the funded activities must meet one of the three national objectives, which include low- to moderate-income benefit, elimination of slum, blight, or community urgent need. Sandusky anticipates our allocation of approximately $750,000 of new funds for program year 2021. The following activities were budgeted for the 2020 program year, which is currently underway and ends June 30th, 2021. Program administration was budgeted $147,905. Fair housing was budgeted $10,000. Public facilities, $270,000. Clearance and demolition of residential structures was $110,396. Acquisition was funded $50,000, with an addition of the substantial amendment adding $100,000 from the inactive revolving loan funds, so that makes that a total of $150,000. Code enforcement was funded $150,000, and youth programming was funded $5,000. Subrecipient applications became available on March 9th and are due to the Department of Community Development no later than 12:00 PM on March 29th, 2021. Applications are accessible on the CDBG page of the City of Sandusky's website at www.cityofsandusky.com/cdbg. A draft of the action plan will be available March 31st, after which there will be a 30-day public comment period. The draft plan will be available for review on the City of Sandusky's website, or by appointment at City Hall, as well as by appointment at the Sandusky Public Library. Public input on community needs relating to CDBG funding can be submitted in writing to the Department of Community Development, located at 240 Columbus Ave, Sandusky, Ohio 44870, or emailed to development@ci.sandusky.oh.us. The following comments were received during the Consolidated Plan Advisory Committee meeting, which was held on March 9th, 2021. Sharon Johnson at 1139 Fifth Street would like to see more funding go towards demolitions. She would like to see the program administration allocation lowered, and she questioned the HUD eligibility areas, specifically why Lyons Park area was removed. The question regarding eligibility is that we go through by the eligible census tracts, and the Lyons Park census tract is no longer eligible. So Mary Byer with Erie County Metro Housing Authority, 322 Wayne Street, added that she would like to see the Meals on Wheels continue to be funded. And in a letter dated 3/8, just prior to the city commission meeting, OGO Executive Director Kendra Faulkner at 36166 Plumb Park Drive requested that this letter be heard at this public hearing. Dear Commissioners, we kindly come requesting assistance to provide weekly emergency food through the CARES Act Round Three for coronavirus CDBG increased funding. OGO's mobile programming addresses poverty through hunger relief and removes the barrier of transportation. The year 2020 showed us how quickly things can change, and how many of us are one job loss, one illness, or one crisis away from possibly not knowing where our next meal may come from. During the most recent crisis, OGO has increased to serving approximately 3,500 households every month, including the recently unemployed, who are now vulnerable to the food insecurity. OGO has increased food distributions from 8,000 pounds of food weekly to now 35,000 pounds of food weekly. We have served food to provide a total of 772,264 meals between March 2020 to current. Our food expenses alone have increased around $3,000 a week. We have increased serving our senior shut-ins and disability population from 140 to now 400 monthly. We have increased our serving our child population from 500 to now 2,900 monthly. Total individuals served since the crisis hit March 2020 is 85,899, 31,911 families. Included in this count are some repeat clients. At this time, we plan to continue meeting the need as best we can with additional pantry events, school pantries, senior deliveries, and fresh produce giveaways. With the help of community-minded individuals like yourselves, we will be able to sustain programming. Kendra Faulkner and Christine Bech, co-founders of OGO, will continue to oversee the operations of the program. As the food insecurity crisis deepens, we are moving into 2021 with hope and dedication. Securing additional funding will allow for more strategic planning, which we have found essential, especially during times such as the recent unexpected pandemic. The Director of Operations currently is receiving $15,000 of City of Sandusky CDBG for salary. Christine has growth plans for 2021. Christine has growth plans for 2021 that include some of the following. Partnering with more food sources, increased opportunities for those in need to access food immediately, i.e. produce prescriptions, school pantries, and new, in a new outdoor locker concept. Identifying and prioritizing upcoming initiatives that will ultimately accelerate implementation as well as continuing her everyday duties as primary coordinator overseeing the quality of our programming. OGO's Compensation Committee comprised of board members Jason Stout, Yashica Brown, and Jill Giles have approved a Director's of Operations salary at $20 an hour for 30 hours a week. This amounts to $31,200. Our Director of Operations in partnership with OGO's Executive Director has led to help bring in $1,500,000 in total income in the fiscal year 2020, which has been used to accelerate breakthrough for many struggling families displaying their passion for the community. An increase to cover the Director of Operations salary would ensure that we can sustain this very essential relief. Any additional funding will go towards specifically the new locker room system to provide immediate food access to those in need as well as partnering with doctors to prescribe nutritious food to patients that qualify, complete with dietitian support and recipes. We hope to alter the food environment and ultimately improve the health through this new concept. We'd love to discuss this further. We have a quote and have started the planning stage with our team of partner engineers through the mobile outreach solutions. Thank you for consideration and support as always. Kindly Kendra Faulkner, OGO Executive Director. Moving on with comments received, here is a summary of comments received prior to the March 9th, 2021 CPAC meeting that involves suggestions regarding the 2021 CDBG program year. These comments were read in their entirety at the substantial amendment public hearing last city commission meeting on 3/8/2021. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, I encourage a reduction in the administration fee and used for additional programming. I encourage CDBG funds for parks and recreation to be used to construct a viable splash pad in the MacArthur Park area. Ashley DeMore, 504 Mason Road East, Mylan, I propose that the $150,000 amount be split evenly between code enforcement and code compliance assistance fund every year. The proposed $70,000, $75,000 for code compliance assistance should be grant money available to CDBG income-qualified people to bring their homes up to code. Some of this fund should be designated to help residents with their water bills and other coronavirus-related struggles. I propose that $25,000 be set aside for a youth bike program. I propose that no more money be designated to public facility projects within the downtown development zone. So in conclusion of my presentation, the timeline for the public process is as follows. March 9th, we held the first CPAC meeting virtually and the subrecipient applications were available. March 10th, a legal ad was published announcing the public hearing, the first public hearing, which is tonight, and subrecipient application availability and also the second CPAC meeting, which is scheduled for 3/31/2021. On March 22nd, we have the first public hearing that's in process now. March 29th, subrecipient applications are due. March 31st, the second CPAC meeting will be held virtually. Draft, a draft version of fiscal year 2021 action plan will be available for review and a 30-day comment period will begin on that action plan. April 26th, the second public hearing at City Commission. April 29th, the 30-day public comment period will end. And on May 10th, a final version of the fiscal year 2021 annual action plan will be considered by City Commission where approval will be requested. And once City Commission approves the final version of the 2021 annual action plan, the plan must be submitted to HUD with the application for federal funding form for final approval. Thank you for letting me speak tonight and this concludes my communication.
Commissioners, comments, or questions for Ms. Eversole?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray, I believe.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm having some IT problems and I don't think I'll be able to show up on camera, which is a deep disappointment because I have a really nice big tie on. But in all events, I would like, appreciate if Ms. Eversole would forward those very specific comments to me so I can closely look at those when we get the, when we get the budget the next time around. So I give those better consideration. Thank you.
Maybe to all of us, Ms. Eversole, if you would provide those comments to all of us, it'll allow us to make a little more informed decision when May the 10th rolls around and we have legislation before us.
Absolutely.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Ms. Eversole, of those suggestions that were made or requests, do they all fit within the guidelines in terms of if we have assigned the money to them, they are all eligible for funding or any of them not?
Through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole, we are in the planning process right now, so we will have to look for eligibility. If it's, if it's a location, we'd have to look for location eligibility or if it's specific to households, it would be an income eligibility. But we will take every, you know, consideration in mind.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not done.
Poole, go ahead and follow up.
When are you going to have that done? See, we're going to vote May 10th. I'd like to know whether or not those things are eligible. How long have you had these requests, this information?
Most of those came in through the substantial amendment public hearing, which I believe, you know, they wanted these heard for this meeting. They weren't appropriate for the last meeting. So I did read them into this meeting. So I would say probably May or March 8th is when I possibly receive these before the CPAC meeting.
Last March you received these?
The beginning of the month.
Oh, the beginning of the month, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Additional questions or comments, Commissioners? There are no further questions, I'll declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you.
Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have four consent items to consider on our agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of these items to the regular agenda? Ms. Briggs, will you present the consent agenda, please?
Absolutely, President Brady. It should be coming up on your screen now. For tonight's consent agenda, item A is an update to the 2020 codified ordinances. Item B is to dispose of the Kronos time clocks and it is the first reading. Item C is to apply for a grant at the Office of the Attorney General for Law Enforcement Body Armor. And item D is a change order, the first and final, with Insight Pipe Contracting for the 2020 sewer lining project and it is a deduction.
Having heard these ordinances and resolutions, Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move to accept the consent agenda and declare that all the ordinances and resolutions is drafted and presented to us under the consent agenda. It'll take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the city's charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Those ordinances and resolutions are passed. Now I'll turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number one, which is a resolution?
Yes, President Brady. Item number one is a resolution requesting the President of the United States of America, Joe Biden, to sign an executive order for federal management to reduce toxic harmful algae blooms that are costly for municipal water treatment plants and result in economic harm to fishing, boating, property, recreation, and tourist-related businesses and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and I believe a second discussion. Mr. Murray, I know that you were instrumental in bringing us this resolution. I wonder if you'd just very briefly share with us its orientation and how it fits, how it fits in our city.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you for the opportunity. I was approached by the Lake Erie Water Keepers. It's an organization that tries to work toward the health of Lake Erie and they pointed out that, you know, the issue that we're dealing with, the issues that we're dealing with here are not limited to a state, they're really region-wide and we need a regional solution to, or at least coordination to the problems that we're facing. We've been working on the Elgo bloom problem in Ohio for close to 10 years and the bad news, the really sad news is we're not making progress. We're kind of treading water, no pun intended, and we really need an elevated federal, elevated federal leadership in this area to bring some consolidated and coordinated response to all of this. So this is an effort that's being undertaken by many, many Ohio and Michigan states, excuse me, counties and cities and we're, I'm asking that we lend our shoulder to this effort to bring federal attention and involvement to this process. You know, Elgo blooms cost us so much money locally. We all know that we're a tourism community and I think we found out this last year just how heavily independent, I think overly dependent that we are on tourism tax dollars, admissions tax, the lodging tax. And if, if long-term Lake Erie doesn't improve or, or good, God forbid, continues to deteriorate, it's not deteriorating now, but it, like I said, it's static, but if that should happen, that could have an enormous impact on our economy. And I should point out that not only does it impact our economy and revenues, it impacts our expenses as well. We've been required to add additional equipment and sometimes use additional chemicals at the water treatment plant and on, at the other end of the system, on the wastewater treatment plant, we've been required to spend tens of millions of dollars to reduce Elgo, to reduce our phosphate output. That's important, but if, you know, some of these other sources, we're doing a little bit more of their part, the onus may not be so much on ratepayers and on cities. So I really think a coordinated response is appropriate and I appreciate the commission's consideration of this resolution.
Additional discussion, Commissioners? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes. Thank you.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number two, please?
Item number two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Erie Blacktop Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio for the Camp Street resurfacing and reconstruction project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris, I believe.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, I know you're out there and eager to explain to us perhaps the parameters of this, of this resurfacing and who and how we're paying for it.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This is a project that we did apply for grant funding a couple of years ago. We finally are able to move forward with the project. It involves resurfacing of Camp Street from Washington to Monroe. In addition to just the milling and filling of the road, there's a section in the middle which is actually where the rail used to be for the old trolley cars. The rail was actually removed, but it's a different base than the base that was there previously. So we're going to go in, or I'm sorry, than the base that's adjacent to it. So we're going to go in, we're going to mill down three inches and take care and make sure that everything is done right and that it's uniform across the base so we don't have that settling down the middle of the roadway. In addition to that, we have about $63,000 of sidewalk and curb ramp repairs that we're going to be doing to replace damaged slabs. So all in all, the project is 372,500 and that's split with 175,000 in grant, 41,000 in a 0% five-year loan and the remainder comes from CDBG and Issue 8 funding. And that CDBG funding is money that's left over from the 2019 fiscal year, or I'm sorry, 2020 fiscal year. So we're applying that to this project.
That is excellent news, Mr. Klein. We are going to see some orange barrels and blacktop in our, in our very near future, I hope. Commissioners, additional questions? Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present to us item number three, which is a resolution?
Item number three is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed 2021 local street resurfacing project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, thank you for providing the list of streets to us. I believe we most of it got it early this morning via an email and that, that should go to great lengths perhaps to answer the question by Ms. Johnson regarding how we can pass legislation without knowing the streets. We, we now have a alphabetically listed compilation of the streets. I appreciate the fact that as I look at this map of streets, they are widely dispersed throughout the city for the most part. I believe that you and I can agree that this represents about 12 miles of pavement throughout our city and although that will be noticed by the people whose homes sit in front of these, this new pavement, we have miles to go before we sleep. Is that not correct, Mr. Klein?
Yes, sir. Through you, Mr. President, to the commission and the residents, this project is something that's, that's very exciting for everybody. Once the city was notified of the potential for stimulus funding, staff moved very quickly with the direction of the city manager and finance director to identify streets as quickly as we could. We knew that there was, you know, a need for more than 2.5 million for asphalt resurfacing, but what we wanted to do was we wanted to be very strategic and I apologize that we didn't have the list earlier and we couldn't provide it with the communication, but our goal is to get this out. communication, but our goal is to get this out immediately so that we can get the best price available. What, what we're anticipating will happen, well, a lot of, is that a lot of communities will be putting forth large resurfacing projects, whether it's local roads like what we're doing, or state highways. And the state will be bidding projects, and there will just be a lot of work out there for asphalt companies. And we wanted to make sure we got ahead of the game so we could get the best price and move as quickly as possible. So we did provide that list today, and it should be going out over the next day or two on social media. We've talked to Andy at the register, and that should be provided there as well if there are people that, that are looking at the agenda and we're not able to see it. So we do have over 12 miles of roadway, which is 150 street sections, that, over 150 street segments or blocks that we will be doing. We, we were very strategic on how we did this based on visual evaluations of every pavement in the city. We tried to focus as much on asphalt roads. We did concrete streets in the past, and those streets that we did previously were more streets that we needed to completely remove and restore the concrete and replace it with asphalt for longevity. But, and we'd also done a lot of the main routes and leveraged local funds for US 6, for other roadways. And even though last year, we did nine miles of reconstruction and resurfacing through US 6, McCartney, Pierce, Buchanan, Shoreline Drive, it really wasn't enough. And it's really exciting to see that the focus, right out of the box with stimulus funding, is $2 million. And we're hoping that this makes a good dent, especially with the fact that last year, we had to cancel $1.1 million as the pandemic was setting in. We had anticipated 1 million last year, 1 million this year, so with 2.5 million, we're actually exceeding what we had anticipated over a two-year time period. So that being said, the breakdown of this is 2.5 million of straight resurfacing, that's going into asphalt roads, and the remaining 400 and some thousand dollars is for new castings, new lids for, for manholes, for sewer and water valves, those types of things. So that money will be coming out of the sewer and water budgets as we do with most of our projects. So hopefully, we can bid this project in April, award it early May, late April, and we can get moving. And whether you see it as fortunate or unfortunate, a lot of the city will be under construction
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional comments or discussion, commissioners? Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Poole.
Can we get this list that was sent out this morning added to the agenda packet? Since we're voting on it, I'd like it to be there for history.
Mr. Briggs, you can add that, add that list that Mr. Klein provided?
I can, I can add that, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Additional, additional discussion, commissioners? Mr. Briggs, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Once I got to a majority, I didn't think I needed those last two. Wrong. And now on, now on the resolution, please.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
That resolution is passed. Mr. Briggs, will you present item number four, please?
Yes, President Brady. Item number four is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Erie County Economic Development Corporation for certain economic development and marketing services for calendar year 2021, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Bemis, there, there was a question from a resident regarding the overlap of, of the responsibilities of Port Authority and ECHADEC being intertwined into one. I wonder if you are familiar with that question, and if you are, if you're not prepared to answer that tonight, that's certainly okay. You can provide an answer to our resident at a later date if you are prepared. We're more than willing to listen to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I can offer a brief comment and happy to follow up with your resident. One thing I would point out on the structure of all of our organizations is that I serve as executive director, but decisions are made at a board level. So the Erie County Board Authority has an independent board of directors, which I report to and who is ultimately the decision-making power of that organization. And then likewise, the Erie County Economic Development Corporation has an independent board of directors who's responsible for its decisions. So in addition to I just, we are both vested in economic development, and I see it really as alignment of mission and efficient use of resources and any potential conflicts of interest circumvented by the independent board of directors.
Thank you, Ms. Bemis. Ms. Briggs, we'll furnish you with that contact information for the resident, and if you would provide that, that answer would be sufficient, I believe, to Ms. Johnson.
Very good.
Additional questions or discussion on this piece of legislation, commissioners? Mr. Briggs, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, President Brady. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Mr. Briggs, will you present item number six, please?
Item number six is an ordinance declaring that certain 44 parcels of real property owned by the city as part of the land reutilization program identified and located in the Cold Creek Crossing subdivision are no longer needed for any municipal purpose, and approving a form of agreement for the purchase and sale with respect to that real property, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
Can someone kind of talk through the process as to how we got to this point of selling these properties? There were some concerns from people in that neighborhood that they weren't notified or they got the notifications late, things of that matter, and really not enough time to provide some feedback on this proposal.
I believe Mr. Holliday would, would perhaps be the best person to speak to that issue, and perhaps you could give us a brief history of how we got, how we got here, Mr. Holliday.
I'll do my best, Mr. Commissioner, Commissioner Brady, but these lots, I understand, came to the city through the foreclosure process as the Cold Creek subdivision developer ran into financial troubles. And the city has been selling lots as buyers have emerged. However, I believe sometime last year, it was determined that we could really benefit from having a high-quality broker to partner with. So I'll be speaking on that more at our next piece of legislation. But there was a request for qualifications issued. There were eight brokers that responded, and HODI was determined to be the most qualified broker for which, for us to partner with. So we have spent some time working with HODI to determine the best way to bring this forward and to position these lots for sale. We did distribute a flyer last week to residents of Cold Creek in order to make sure that they were aware of this. We have, I have heard from a number of residents and appreciate their feedback and their interest. We're also looking at additional improvements that could be done in the Cold Creek neighborhood. And while nothing has been determined, we do have some ideas and are looking forward to working with the residents there in order to best position Cold Creek not only for sales of our city lots, but also for just the enjoyment of the residents and to be one of the city's premier neighborhoods.
Additional discussion, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I talked to a few residents too from out there. I guess one of the concerns was, is this going to be multiple units, two, three units connected in the one? They were concerned about that when they indicated that they spent 250 or 300,000 to buy property and then build their home there. They were worried about, could it turn into a three unit that possibly renting one of the units out and living in one? And I really didn't have an answer for them. I don't know what that's going to fall under.
Through the commission president to Commissioner Waddington, I can speak to that. So staff has not changed at all what the original site plan was for the Cold Creek neighborhood that was adopted from the outset of the project. There are, I believe, and Jonathan can speak to the details of this, slightly over 40 single-family lot homes available, but there were always, and it's been built out to some extent with a cul-de-sac that was dedicated to side-by-side duplexes, as well as a few other sites that were always meant to be for multifamily. But the one thing that we can state, and Jonathan and I have had a few conversations with residents that did call today, that we, that did get the notification that was put out to the community on this, is that while we are sticking to the original plan, there is nothing to say that over time, that, you know, what we're doing today is asking for a vote to list the property, not necessarily to sell the property under these current and specific criteria that have been developed through the RFQ process. And so there is an opportunity to look at the details of what was always set out to be multifamily. But the one thing that both Jonathan and I stated in those calls is, multifamily doesn't mean high quality. You know what I mean? It doesn't mean that it's not high quality. And in fact, we have a lot of discretion in determining what to sell through the listing agreement, to determine whether any project, whether it's a single-family project for one of those lots or one of the multifamily lots, to ensure that whatever is proposed there can continue to be high quality and for the benefit of the entire neighborhood. And Jonathan, please feel free to add to that, but I just wanted to make it clear that we're not making any change to what was initially adopted as part of this plan and was the plan that every resident of this neighborhood bought a home in the neighborhood with this being what had been adopted at that time.
I guess, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
Just for a follow-up for the city manager then, they were, they felt like they weren't like a letter or something was come out. I guess some of the residents, this is the person I talked to, and I think you probably know who it is, when I talked to him, he said he felt like a lot of the residents in this area didn't have direct, or some type of communication. I guess they were, didn't have a door hanger or like a city information as far as what was going on, so some confusion. So I think it's cleared up a little bit now for me, but I guess, you know, going forward, that might have helped out a lot there, so, thank you.
Through the commission president to Commissioner Waddington, and Jonathan can speak to specifically what was done, but I do know there was some outreach to the neighborhood that took place last week. But that outreach, just to reiterate, we have been selling parcel-by-parcel properties in Cold Creek for years, for the entire time that I have been at the city of Sandusky. But what we wanted to do was to bring on a Realtor to help market those lots in this strong housing market, have an ability to bring that property back to market. So again, while there was some outreach on, to the community on doing this, we just want to say, we're not recommending the sale of any property within Cold Creek, but instead are recommending the partner that we will use to market these lots to the community while maintaining the discretion that the city has had in the past as to when to sell a lot and on what terms. But Jonathan, again, please feel free to add to that.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Okay, I recognize that, let me, let me back up. Did you, did you indicate that the original plans, or whatever legally could be built out there, based on what the developer planned, is what we are still going with?
Through the commission president, and again, Jonathan, please feel free to restate this, but my understanding has always been that what is being listed now is being listed based on the original plan from the original development.
Maybe I should ask, is the original development, what, what kind of things were that made the people who bought out there comfortable that their investments were going to be protected? That the standard of housing was going to be built comparable to what they were doing? Is there something in the, in that development agreement at the, from all the way back that does that?
Mr. Chairman, to the commissioner, we are maintaining the deed restrictions that existed on the properties when we received those. So new buyers will be held to those same deed restrictions that existing buyers were held to. As the city manager indicated, we will also be reviewing the building plans as proposals come in to ensure that these are high-quality developments, not only that meet our local building and zoning codes, but also the high standards that have previously existed in Cold Creek and that we want to see continue. I think it's in our best interest to maintain those high standards as the city and as the owner of these parcels. So we'll certainly be looking at each proposed sale to ensure that those high standards continue to be met once we sell the property.
Okay, just recognize that not communicating that effectively to the people that are already out there, living there, puts us in a bad light for anybody else moving out there. This needs to be extremely transparent, not just transparent, we need to be overly expressing to the world what we're trying to do out there. And what's come up to now, you indicated that you passed out flyers. The residents indicate that two flyer, one flyer was put on two large mailboxes. They have bulk mailboxes, and they put a flyer on each one of those sets of bulk mailboxes, which meant a lot of people didn't get anything. The $8,000, I read it's in, that the price of the properties, there's some questions that go with that in terms of to give folks the indication that you're selling lots at, at discount prices, and they're concerned about what kinds of houses are going to be there. And when you start describing what we're doing in terms of protecting our discretion as opposed of assurances of what you're trying, what they're actually going to get, I don't think that's a good sign for the people that live there in terms of they're supporting what we're doing, or people on the outside considering coming in, if we're not real definitive about ensuring that folks realize that we're going to do a quality business. So as we move forward, I'm, I'm very satisfied with who you selected for this, but this lack of information, and given, I was under the impression that you had canvassed the neighborhood. It turns out there was a flyer placed on, on two different locations that if folks didn't pick up their mail on the day, then they didn't know about it. That is, I, I just want to let you know, this is difficult. It's difficult for me to vote for this today. I almost want to suggest that, especially since these properties don't have to be, aren't going to sell tomorrow, that we postpone this until you've had time to calm down the neighbors and, and get their support before we move forward. And I will defer to my colleagues to see what they think about it.
Additional discussion, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Meinzler.
Yes, I, I like Mr. Whoopser's, Mr. Holliday's answers, and I'm going to go back to what Mr. Holliday said. He said this is a premier neighborhood. It was sold as such, a private developer with building covenants, deed restrictions. I don't know if there's homeowners association out there. I can assure you that as long as we sit here, there will not be slab-on-grade, multiple-family housing out there. However, I would just suggest, over the next few months, we tidy this up and we lock it in, these deed restrictions and building covenants are ironclad to put everybody at ease, and that we'll continue to grow this premier neighborhood that's out there. There's some beautiful homes, and I understand their concern.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Mr. Poole, that's a pretty good point in terms of providing a little bit more time for input. So rather than... So rather than voting to table this right now, I'd like to suggest consideration of voting it, voting on it on its first reading, and then taking it up at the next meeting after we give, have a chance for some information to be disseminated, some people to absorb some information, and then, and then passing it under 13 or 14, whatever it is, at the next meeting. Just, it would just provide an opportunity to address some of those concerns. And one of the things I would point out, a lot of cities, what a lot of cities would do this, they would sell the lots to a developer as opposed to having the developer work as their agent. And I'm pretty satisfied with the explanation Mr. Holliday gave, that we do retain full control to decide, you know, what's appropriate to be built out here over the time period. Maybe rather than stopping this process, we could just slow it down a little bit. So I will no on the motion, but yes on the legislation.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I agree with Commissioner Murray. I don't have a problem changing my motion to a first reading to support some, a longer time period for some more feedback.
Commissioner Twine has indicated her willingness to amend her motion to a, to a first reading. I'll need a little direction perhaps from the Law Director. Does that require, is that motion, is that a motion that requires a vote?
I'll give it a second if it's needed.
Yes, through you, Commission President, to the Commission. Commissioner Twine's motion should get a second, which I think Commissioner Poole just did, vote on the amendment to the original motion, and then proceed voting on the, the actual motion.
Exactly, exactly. We have a, we have a motion and we have a second. I will ask Ms. Briggs to call a rule on that, on that motion to amend.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Abstained.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That motion is passed. That piece of legislation is amended to a first reading. Now we'll return to, we'll return to that piece of legislation. Additional discussion.
Commission President.
Would that be Commissioner Harris?
It's actually Chief Oliver.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wanted to speak before you got to your, your, your motion. I think I can add a little bit more context to the neighborhood being notified, if I have a minute.
Sure, go ahead.
I was the one who posted those flyers, it was about a week ago. We also posted a flyer on the neighborhood Facebook page, which most neighbors are on. I also had some questions from neighbors. I didn't know what I could tell or speak about or not speak about because this wasn't public yet through who was going to be in charge of the lots and the sales and stuff. But I can tell you firsthand, 90% of the neighborhood knows exactly what's going on. I'm not sure who the others are, but there was two flyers put up, there's two community mailboxes. I posted those myself, and then there was another flyer posted that was laminated because we had some pretty severe weather last week. So just to add that for the Commissioners, for your knowledge.
Thank, thank you, Chief. I think it cannot be emphasized enough that in situations like this, you can never communicate enough.
Right.
These, this impacts residents, when it impacts their home, which is the nest egg for about 99% of us in our lives, they take it, they take it very seriously, and, and the unknown is what frightens them. And if we can, if we can, if we can reduce that unknown to a level playing field, I think, I think both the residents benefit and we benefit as a city. So I'm pleased that we're going to do a little more communication between now and, and the second reading and hopefully go forward from there. Additional comments or discussion, Commissioners? If not, we will have a, we will have a, Ms. Briggs, will you poll the Commission on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Abstained.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Point of order.
Yeah.
I think we're voting, or just voting on the legislation on first reading, so I don't think we're voting, I don't think we need two votes.
Correct.
That's correct.
Excellent. That piece of legislation then passes only on first reading. That be correct? Ms. Briggs, will you present item number seven, please?
President Brady, do you want to do item six or item seven?
Six.
I think we're at six.
We're at six.
Item number six? Item number six?
Item number six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the City Manager to enter into an exclusive right to sell agreement with Hody Enterprises Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the marketing and sale of 44 vacant parcels of land in the Cold Creek Crossing subdivision in Sandusky, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I think we should table this until we resolve the item number five.
Motion to table is made and seconded.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I agree, tabling this is fine. I want to make it certain that it has nothing to do with any hesitation about supporting this when we actually complete our deliberation about what we want to do with the property.
Sounds like you, this Commission's position is to bring both of these pieces of legislation back at the same time.
Exactly, exactly. We, it's vitally important that the public support what we're doing, and this is just one more step in, in ensuring that the public recognizing that we're doing our due diligence and paying close attention to what they, to their input, and we want to make sure that everybody realizes that we want the best for the city.
Additional comments, Commissioners?
I hate to bust your chops, Mr. Chairman, but point of order.
Okay.
Motion to table is an undebatable motion.
Excellent.
Good point.
Ms. Ms. Briggs, will you call a rule on the motion?
We wanted to say that, though.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
I'm going to abstain from this one as well, just because of my relationship with the potential broker here.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That motion to table is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number seven, please?
Yes, President Brady. Item number seven is an ordinance authorizing and approving a grant in the amount of $15,000 through the Economic Development Fund to RDMJD LLC in relation to the property located at 2101 West Perkins Avenue, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddick.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Holliday, would you share with us what we're doing here?
Absolutely, Commissioner. RDMJD LLC is a real estate holding company owned by members of the Honor family, which also own Honor Commercial and Supply, which some of you may be familiar with. It's one of the premier window, door, and storefront installation and distribution companies in our area. We are thrilled to be here with them this evening to be discussing their recent purchase of the former YMCA building on Perkins Avenue, and their plans to invest over $150,000 in that facility over the next number of years. They have an initial investment planned, an immediate investment planned of over $28,000, which this grant will help to support in order to get them up and running in that facility. They're going to immediately create seven jobs at that location and create an additional seven jobs over the next three years. So there's going to be two pieces of legislation before you this evening. First, this piece awarding the $15,000 grant, and then next, a tax abatement that they've requested. This grant was reviewed and recommended for approval by our Economic Development Committee at its meeting in February, and we are joined by Rosalind Honor this evening, and I know she and I will be happy to answer any questions you might have about this exciting project.
All right.
Commissioners, questions for Ms. Honor or for Mr. Holliday?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I don't have any questions. I do want to express my thoughts and gratitude for their business wanting to come here and expand here in Sandusky. I think it is a good opportunity for employment and longer-term employment for, for those people who might, if this legislation passed, might be able to utilize the services that they could provide as, as staff members of, of Honor. So again, thank you very much and appreciate your, your desire to expand here in Sandusky and utilize a building that could have stood for a very long time, empty and vacant and deteriorated. So again, expressing my appreciation for that.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? My only concern, Ms. Honor, is that Commissioner Waddington might be hitting a seven iron into your parking lot more often than you think.
I love it.
You, you don't have to return his ball. Additional, additional really serious questions, folks.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck. Ms. Briggs, will you call a rule on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number eight, please?
Yes, President Brady. Item number eight is an ordinance authorizing and directing the City Manager to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with RDMJD LLC in relation to the property located at 2101 West Perkins Avenue, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call a rule on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes, yes.
That ordinance is passed, with our thanks to the Honor family.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it greatly.
Ms. Briggs, will you present item number nine, please?
Yes, President Brady. Item number nine is an ordinance declaring that a portion of certain real property owned by the city located at 430 East Market Street, Sandusky, and identified as parcel number 56-00985.000 is no longer needed for any municipal purpose, and authorizing and directing the City Manager to enter into an agreement to sell the designated real property to Eduardo and Jennifer Torres, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Holliday, you are, you have the floor again. If you'd explain to us what we're doing here, we'd appreciate it. You have to work between the sirens.
Yes, I am pleased to be joined tonight by the Torres family, who are seeking to purchase this lot for the city for the construction of a new single-family house that they will use for their own owner occupancy. They are proposing a major investment here in the city of Sandusky, and we're really pleased to be working with them on this project. I will point out that the purchase price does recognize that we know from environmental testing that some of the soil at that location is compromised, but the Torres's have agreed to take the property as is and remediate the property as needed for the construction of the new house. They have gotten an estimate, which we've used to negotiate this purchase price, and I will say that their proposed work is costing less than some of the numbers that we were receiving when we were looking into remediating this property. So I think this is a very reasonable deal that we've negotiated here with the Torres's. I'm excited about their project, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I know the Torres's will as well.
Questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meiser.
Yeah, I'm excited to hear that this is an owner-occupied home going up in Sandusky. This is, this is a great thing, like to start to see people moving in, building spec homes and buying them, so I'm, I'm all for this.
Additional comments, Commissioners? I agree, we, we do not get many new homes built in this city, so we, we should and will certainly celebrate this. Our thanks to the, to these folks for taking a chance on our city, and I, I think you will be greatly rewarded, living, living in this community and living downtown is, I think can be a special opportunity for, for everyone. Thank you for taking a chance on us. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Briggs, will you call a rule on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed, and the Torres's have a lot to build their new home on. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You had to sit through a couple hours to get to that. I'm sorry. Had I been doing the agenda, you'd have been first.
It was worth it.
That concludes our regular agenda, and we'll turn now to our City Manager for his report.
Thank you, Commission President Brady and Commissioners. Hopefully the Torres's aren't like the vast majority of our directors, also Ohio University graduates waiting to watch their team in the second round of the NCAA basketball tournament tonight, which is about a once-in-a-fifteen-or-twenty-year opportunity.
Ooh. Balls.
With that being said, I will turn to the donations, and their, for their sake as well as others, I will do my best to, to get through this quickly. A donation of $40 to the Sandusky Fire Department was received from Ben Fritz. He requested the money be used to purchase lunch for the firefighters who assisted him on a call and asked for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved, with our thanks for the donation.
Second, a donation of $75 to the Sandusky Police Department was received from Hank Soloway and family in memory of Andy Dunn.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved, with our thanks to the Hank Soloway family.
And then a final donation for the evening, a special thank you to Barnes Nursery for donating the London plane tree to be planted in Huron Park in celebration of Arbor Day. You can stay tuned for further details about the event, but I would ask for a motion to accept that donation as well.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved to Barnes Nursery, with our thanks. approved to Barnes Nursery, with our thanks.
Moving on to administration, the NAACP, the local chapter, will be hosting a virtual town hall on the COVID-19 vaccine on this Thursday, March 25th, at 7:30 p.m. Sandusky native Dr. Leon will, of the National Medical Association and serving at the Ohio State University, Loxner Medical Center, will be leading the discussion, along with several illustrious panelists from the community, the most illustrious being our Commissioner Naomi Twine. She will be hosting the town hall on the city's Facebook page, and we encourage everyone to tune in for that important discussion. Also, for the police, a thank you to the training staff at Fireland Regional Health System for assisting in recertifying all of the officers in CPR for basic life-saving skills. For the fire department, the department is requesting approval to submit a 2021-2022 grant application to the Ohio Department of Public Safety Division of EMS as the deadline is approached. It's April 1st of this year. The fire department applies every year for this grant and is awarded different amounts each year. The grant, if awarded, covers training and equipment. There is no budgetary impact. The grant, if awarded, is 100% funded, and the Ohio Department of Public Safety with no matching funds. A ratification will be done for the April 12, 2021, meeting, but I would ask for a motion to approve the application at this time.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved.
Thank you. For finance, the filing deadline for municipal income tax returns is April 15. With your health and safety in mind, we offer contact-free ways to easily file and pay your municipal income taxes. Please visit RitaOhio.com for more information. Also, customer accounting has discontinued the use of a P.O. box to receive mail effective immediately. Mail all utility bills and correspondence to 240 Columbus Avenue, Sandusky, Ohio, 44870. For code compliance, the Noxious Weed and Grass Ordinance was published in the Register on March 12, 2021, as the annual notice requirement. This section of our codified ordinances requires the owner or occupant having the care of any lot or land within the city to cut, remove all noxious weeds and grass of a height of eight inches or more. Voluntary cooperation by all property owners is appreciated, and any request regarding compliance should be directed to the City of Sandusky's Division of Code Compliance at 419-627-5913. Also, for code compliance, as a follow-up for the approval of vehicle for code compliance, the commission approved up to 15,000. Fleet Manager Troy McCarroll located and purchased a 2006 Chevy truck at an auction site for $7,202.50 located in South Carolina. Vehicle's in very good shape and rust-free condition with just over 70,000 miles, and appears not to have been used for hauling or towing, and is mechanically in very good shape. We want to thank Troy for his diligence in locating this vehicle, which will be used to transport mowers and equipment to various properties throughout the city that need cut or abated. For public works, the city's accepting applications for a few positions that we're looking to fill. Please contact Human Resources or visit the city's website for more information. Also, during a routine bridge inspection on the bridge over Mills Creek near the golf course, ODOT consultant noticed a wing wall that supports the approach slab was damaged. While this does not appear to affect the bridge deck or the load rating of the structure, ODOT requested the sidewalk be closed until we could develop an air. Staff has notified the nearby property owner who uses a motorized wheelchair. Also, per commission approval, grounds maintenance has prepared an industrial mower in time for the start of mowing season, which was received last week, and various divisions have begun seasonal preparation throughout the city, including installation of docks and buoys, as well as traffic calming measures for state routes and neighborhoods, activation of park fountains and operations of restrooms, and more frequent waste collection in the downtown business district. To report an issue or for questions, please call 419-627-5829. Also, due to continued COVID-19 restrictions and per the Health Department, only bottle-filling stations at some city properties will be turned on this spring. Water staff is currently looking into the possibility of installing additional stations to accommodate visitors at various parks. Also, the hydration station will be available for events this summer since the drinking cup is replaced with hand sanitizer, and docks at the Shelby Street boat launch will be installed, are being installed actually starting today, March 22nd, and the floating dock at the Pike Creek Wildlife Preserve will be installed tomorrow, March 23rd, for community development. The second hearing on the 2021 CDVG Annual Action Plan is scheduled for Monday, April 26th. Housing Development Defication Program received 111 applications. Staff is to after processing applications and awarding funds, and applications are still being accepted for Economic Development Fund assistance from the city. Some upcoming meetings, the Arts and Culture Commission meeting will meet on Tuesday, April 20th, at 5:15. My Mark will meet April 21st at 5:00 p.m. Board of Zoning Appeals will meet Thursday, April 15th, at 4:30, and the Planning Commission will meet Wednesday, April 28th, at 5:00 p.m. And finally, the city was recently notified that it was awarded a $30,000 grant from Erie County Community Foundation to assist in the funding of a strategic plan for the Sandusky Transit System. We will continue to do some other fundraising and get that process started later this year. That's my remarks for this evening. I am happy to answer any and all questions or take comments from the city commissioner others. Thank you.
Commissioners, questions or comments for the city manager? You're off the hook easily tonight, Mr. Webster. Next item on our agenda are items of old business. Commissioners, any items of old business? Items of new business? Commissioners, any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Mr. Chairman, I believe all my colleagues know the Corso's family has applied for a zoning change with the planning commission. The property in question is currently owned by St. Paul's Lutheran Church, but this is definitely not a done deal, as some have claimed. But the fact that the church is going to close and merge with another church, that much is a done deal. So we know that the property use will change. It will not remain a church, and the owners of the property have a right to change the zoning in order to be able to realize its value. The city could deny this request, only to find itself at the losing end of a lawsuit at considerable expense and with few restrictions on the use of the property. As it is, Corso's has agreed to some strict limitations that I believe address most of the neighbors' legitimate concerns. I want to acknowledge that more than a few of the neighbors remain concerned that the rezoning would change their neighborhood. I believe that this is overwhelmingly based upon misinformation or the lack of enough information, and that we and Corso's can and will answer those questions Wednesday night when this issue again comes up before the planning commission. I urge everyone listening who has questions about the process to first call or email our planning department with questions so that Corso's and our staff can read those questions and address the neighbors' concerns and answer those questions on Wednesday night. To have your questions answered, write to Kristen Barone of the planning department or call her at 627-5891. That's 627-5891. Or you can email her at K Barone, that's the letter C, B-A-R-O-N-E, at ci.sandusky.oh.us. Let me read that again, because it's a cumbersome email. All the city emails are K Barone, B-A-R-O-N-E, at ci.sandusky.oh.us. But I also want to note that this application has been turned into a racial powder keg by some. Many of the social media comments and other communications are overtly racist, and they're frankly, repulsive. I had hoped that we were better than this, but some clearly are. I'm expressed concerns that crime will increase and property values will decrease because of the transit nature of the residents. But let me ask those folks this, would you have the same concern if the transit residents were part of a football or basketball camp, cheerleading clinic, or teenage Christian ministry camp? I don't think so. The recruiting firm that Corso's contracts with does background checks prohibits any alcohol whatsoever you get sent packing back home. They will take three buses of employees out in the morning and bring three back 11 hours later, six days a week. The housing conditions in the dormitory will be regularly inspected as part of the visa program, and at 15-plus dollars an hour, Corso's hires as many people locally as it can, but it simply cannot attract enough people locally to stay in business. I would also point out that Corso's has already held an open house and worked to answer many residents' questions, but we need to do more and will on Wednesday night. At the end of the day, I believe that the planning commission should only take action after listening to the residents' concerns and providing Corso's and staff with an opportunity to address those concerns. But I would again point out that if the property is simply vacated, that creates its own set of problems. And as I mentioned before, if we refuse to consider any zoning changes, we may and probably will find ourselves at the losing end of litigation with less control than we have presently by negotiating the restrictions with Corso's. So rezoning truly is a balancing act. My confidence that what is proposed is the right answer for the property is buoyed by the fact that it is the Corso family that is proposing this. They have been outstanding corporate citizens for many decades. They do things the right way. They are good partners, and I am confident that they will be in this venture. But this is not based upon a simple handshake, because ownership can change, and the leadership certainly will change, and the restrictions put on the future use of this property are, in my judgment, more than enough to provide confidence to the neighborhood that some future uses of this property will not negatively impact the neighborhood. You know, my father, my grandfather, I should say, was a farmer in Huron Township. He grew a lot of vegetables, and just like flowers, they're very labor-intensive. Year after year, he paid a group of Puerto Ricans to come up to the farm and work. They lived in dorms right behind the home that he and my grandmother, my mother and my aunt shared on Berlin Road. They lived there, and those same Puerto Ricans lived there all the many summer days that I stayed at the farm, which was many. My grandmother would take them wonderful pies, and my grandfather surely shared more than one bottle of hooch with them. I met them too, and went out to what we called the cottage, but it was really just a dorm. I was afraid at first. They looked different, and they sounded different. But I came to understand that they were good people who did good and valuable work, honorable work. Circumstances are different today, but not that much. The contractor that Corso's uses to conduct background checks and provide housing and transportation has already been using rental properties in Sandusky for several years. There have been no problems, and I don't believe that there will be any here. So let's educate ourselves about the real facts, and if we're going to call ourselves a welcoming community, let's prove it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
I'd just like to comment. I'm not certain that that issue is one of people do not want a zoning change. They're not certain that the zoning change that's proposed and the project is going to be beneficial to the neighborhood. It's difficult with Zoom meetings that people can't attend for them to have coherent questions when they haven't been presented with anything to have to question about. I'm certain that this was not a project that started the day before the planning commission took it on last month, their last meeting, and the fact that the residents were caught so much by surprise, or so many people didn't know enough about it to come to the conclusions that Commissioner Murray came through, is an indication of a different problem. But it's not fair to suggest because folks, random people that we don't know, write racist things on social media to suggest that that means the neighbors that live in that neighborhood do not have legitimate concerns due to the lack of information that they've been provided about this project. Essentially, the neighbors I've talked, who have called me, indicate that they feel that this is too many people in too small an area. It's not an issue of what their race is at all. Now, I realize everyone jumps to their own conclusions about what people's motives are, but it is a fair question to ask that in a neighborhood that has 15 homes, which means if there's four people a house, there's about 45 people, packing 200 people into one building project without a whole lot of explanation of what those folks are going to do for the rest of the day when they're just sitting there cooped up in this building, what they're going to do in the neighborhood, how it adds to the neighborhood. And I'm not here to promote one way or another on this. I do have some of my own thoughts about what could or should be done here, but I do want to say that this is not about a community that is not welcoming. It's about a neighborhood of folks who have invested greatly in that neighborhood, it is a very nice neighborhood to live in, that something has been sprung on them that they don't have enough information to make a good, clear decision about, and the process by which you're going about this, they're not going to get it, because you plan to vote on this on Wednesday. So, thank you.
Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meizer.
I'm even surprised this came up tonight. Obviously, Mr. Murray and Mr. Poole were prepared for it and had their arguments prepared. I'm trying to digest what I just heard. I did receive a phone call from that neighborhood, and I did read the Register article from the Corso's. With that said, I've lost some sleep over this issue over the last three nights. I will tell you, I have Latino friends, Hispanic friends, I work with them. I brought seven Latinos in from Chicago Union Drywallers that I put up in a lake house so they could drywall 300 sheets of drywall in one weekend. I bought them a 12-pack of Modelo, they drank two of them, they drank the Gatorade. I go to Norwalk-St. Paul, because my granddaughters go to Norwalk-St. Paul, so I go to that church. It's mostly Latino. They're great people. They're God-fearing, great people. The Knights of Columbus in Norwalk is mostly Latinos. There shouldn't, the fear, I understand the fear thing is the unknown. There's, I forgot how many thousands of people crossing the border right now. It's open, like there's seven times the density for all these retention centers. It's coming, but we're going to have to find some housing, we're going to have to find some humanity to put these people up. That's one argument. Then the other side of my brain is telling me, I don't believe Mr. Murray saying there's going to be a big liability and litigation, because I think the reason, when I read the newspaper article, they're going to be shopping in Sandusky. Out there on Perkins Avenue, if they're not going to shop at Honor's Storm Door Store, I don't know what they're going to buy. They're going to go to Dollar General or Clis Carry Out. So there's nothing to shop. It's like a desert out there for groceries. They're going to have to use transit. I don't see where we've made a lot of money running transit. I think that, like I said, I wasn't prepared for this, but it just seems to me, humanitarily, like putting that density into that building isn't a good thing to do. And the reason I think that they said that shopping, it's going to be great for Sandusky, 1/4% of somebody that works here three months is baloney. So I don't see the value to Sandusky, what it adds to Sandusky to have transient residents. It doesn't add to our census, it doesn't add that much to our income. Yes, it does add to our services, health and human services, police, fire, probably. I will tell you another thing I thought about, and I got five minutes, right, Mr. President?
Go ahead, Mr. Meizer.
Okay, so we bring in all these transient people every year, Asians, Eastern Europeans, Russians, never a problem. We don't have any problems in this city with them. You know what the problem is? The problem is our local residents take advantage of them because they're vulnerable. That's what happens, is how do we protect these people? And so that's another aspect we've got to look at. They're coming in here with no transportation, very limited language skills, and they're going to be taken advantage of by local people. I'm more worried about them. So, and the whole litigation aspect, I think the reason that Sandusky was chosen, the South Side was, one, it's a good business decision because it's cheap, and two, is because it was the path of least resistance. That's why it was chosen. When I read in the paper, it said Margaret of Perkins, business owner, you know how much resistance they would get out there? Do you know how much resistance that they would get if they built that at Cedar Point Shaw's sake? That wouldn't even come up tonight's meeting. So we got a really big decision to make, and it's going to take a lot more information, like Mr. Poole said and Mr. Murray said. So I think Wednesday night, we should all tune in and see what everybody's got to say.
I don't think it can be emphasized enough, it's happened twice on two pieces, on this discussion and on some legislation earlier, that you just cannot communicate enough, whether that's between ourselves, whether that's between staff and commission, whether it's between commission and the residents. The more communication we get out there, the sooner we get it out there, the more broad it is, public forums, that's what's going to be required to really resolve things like this, and to get everyone's cards out on the table and find out where the objections are, where the benefits are, and truly find what the right what the right course of action is for our residents and for our city. Additional items of new business, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris.
Yeah, not to take much time at all, but just to, I mean, sort of echo what it is that you said, as well as, you know, Commissioner Poole, I couldn't agree more. I've had, you know, concerned citizens reach out to me via email and/or by phone, and, you know, really just getting that information out there and, you know, making them feel more comfortable with this pending decision is definitely key. And as you stated, Mr. Chairman, you know, with the pieces of legislation earlier in tonight's meeting, I think, you know, we certainly need to do our due diligence, as well as, you know, get that information to these concerned individuals, just so, you know, so we and they, you know, so we can all just make a much more informed decision, because this is certainly something, as of right now, that I'm struggling with, to say the least. So, but we'll cross that bridge when we soon get to it, so.
Additional items, Commissioners? Not I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Anybody?
President Brady?
Oh, I'm sorry. We got to go back to questions. We do have questions, Ms. Briggs.
Are you ready? So, beginning with Sharon Johnson of 1139 Fifth Street in Sandusky, she said the Landmark Bar would like to build a beautiful deck next door on its vacant lot. I dislike the idea that the bar would like to set a shipping container on the planned patio slash deck. It would ruin what the bar is trying to accomplish. The business should do better planning so it does not have to rely on a shipping container to be part of its plan. The city takes pride in how downtown looks to visitors by covering up the garbage containers. So why would the city ever allow these hideous containers to become a standard in downtown? The next comes from Tim Schwanger of 362 Sheffield Lay in Sandusky. His first comment is, "In 2020, funds were set aside from the Parks and Recreation Fund to perform concrete repair on the west to east portion of the Meggs Street Pier at Battery Park. The contract to repair has been canceled, and the city is negotiating with the new leaseholder of Battery Park to have the new leaseholders participate in financing repairs. In examining the condition of the Washington Street Pier, this particular pier is in need of similar concrete repair. I'd like to recommend using the Parks and Recreation $30,000 plus originally earmarked for the Meggs Street Pier be reassigned repairs to the Washington Street Pier. The pier is used extensively by various public uses, including walking, biking, fishing, and is one of the most-used locations to view the Fourth of July fireworks." Additionally, he said, "Legacy drywall owned by a city commissioner has received contract for drywall work at one of the city's facilities. The concern is this contract violates the city charter and Ohio revised codes."
Thank you, Ms. Briggs.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Can I ask Ms. Briggs a question?
Yes.
We received one comment late. Does that woman realize that we did receive it?
Mr. Poole, I asked Ms. Briggs if she could read this, and she indicated she was having trouble reading it. I spent some time this afternoon. I can read it if you'd like. I'd like to read it into the record, because I think this lady, obviously, I think every resident has the right to be heard, so I will attempt to read her writing. "I firmly object to converting St. Paul's Church into a dormitory. This is a residential district and should remain as such. The South Side has been working to demolish derelict property, clean up neighborhoods, and refurbish old houses. We take pride in what we do to keep our community a great place to live and thrive." I doubt if the...
If this proposition...
If the proposition would fly, if it ever...
Were proposed.
Was proposed for a property in downtown Sandusky and is signed by Norma McFadden. Thank you, Ms. McFadden. Those questions will be distributed to the appropriate staff for answers. I think some of them might have been comments. I'm not sure. There were all questions in there, but certainly the ones that were questions will be distributed to the appropriate staff for the appropriate answer. Does anyone have an objection to me asking for a motion to adjourn?
No.
So moved.